All in favor, please rise to the side. By the way.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God and in this whole liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Mr. Harrington.
Here.
Mr. Merrick has been excused, Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Depot.
Here.
Mr. Farabee.
Here.
Mr. Monte has been excused, Mr. McNally.
Here.
Mr. Skazafaba.
Here.
Mr. Miga has been excused, Mr. Pledy.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. McNally has been excused, Mr. Whitson.
Here.
Mr. Jordan, an order of an excuse, Mr. Tyler.
Here.
Mr. Gweland.
Here.
And Mr. Preston.
Here.
Thank you.
No gas, move right.
Resolution is recommended by the Human Services Committee authorizing the appointment of E.D. Poland of Keyesville as a member of Essex County Community Services Board for term effective September 1st through December 31st, 2017, and as a member of the C.S.B. Developmental Disabilities Subcommittee for term effective September 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
Move by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Harrington, any discussion? If not all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolution recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month and September 5th through the 11th as National Suicide Prevention Week.
Move by Mr. Tyler, lead the house, second. So carry it.
Resolution authorizing Essex County Office for the Aging to hold a public hearing in the month of October, the proposed state fiscal year 2017 through 2018 in New York State.
Move by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Tyler, any discussion? If not all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolution is recommended by the Public Safety Committee, amending resolution number 251 of 2011, the Essex County Ways and Measures 2011 Device Fee Schedule by amending to include the New York State Regulation Section 22, 220.3A, Scale B.
Move by Mr. Gill, seconded by Mr. Gardner, any discussion? If not all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing a budget amendment in Emergency Services Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $216,708 from nice extra share of the capital portion of the radio project.
Move by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Gill, any discussion? If not all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract with model one maintenance in the amount of $179,823.36 for the public safety building radio communication system.
Move by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Gill, any discussion?
This quarter, here's one year. That's a one-year maintenance contract that's coming from the radio project funds this year because of the additional money that we received from the partners. Moving forward, it'll have to be a budget item. Yeah, maintenance charges are what kills them about.
You gotta make those charges on these other lights. So carry it.
Resolution authorizing Emergency Services Department to purchase a GTR 8,000 spare radio in the amount of $14,938 with funds to complement the radio project.
Move by Mr. Gill, seconded by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? If not all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolution authorizing Emergency Services Department to apply for and accept the 2016-2017 Public Safety Answering Point Operations Grant.
Move by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Gill, any discussion? If not all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to go out to bid it for an engineering study to install a 48-volt power supply at the Inger Hill radio site.
Move by Mr. Gill, seconded by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? If not all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Emergency Services Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $116,240 for 2015-16 P-SAP operations grant.
Move by Mr. Gill, seconded by Mr. Morrow, any discussion?
Now that we can hear.
This unit's got a promotion to ID.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing a budget amendment in the Public Defender's Office, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $63,832, year one of a three-year Office of Indigent Legal Services Grant.
Move by Mr. Gill, seconded by Mr. Tyler, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolutions recommended by the Economic Development Committee approving issuance by the Essex County Capital Resource Corporation of certain tax-exempt qualified 501(c)(3) revenue bonds to finance a project for the Adirondack Medical Center, DBA Adirondack Health in the town of North Elba.
Move by Mr. Pledy, seconded by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolutions recommended by the DPW Committee, authorizing a budget amendment in the Department of Public Works, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $399,000 for the purchase of an asphalt paper.
Move by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Depot, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to Taylor Rental in the amount of $31,000 for two digital informational signs.
Move by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Tyler, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the Health and Safety Department to accept an Occupational Safety and Health Hazard Abatement Board Grant in the amount of $5,405 for the county and town safety training for the period of August 1st through July 31st, 2017.
Move by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Whitson, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing to hire a temporary full-time employee in the Fish Hatchery Department.
Move by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Moore, any discussion?
Salary, anybody know where?
County attorney's asking about salary.
It's at that lowest level of the hatchery technician position. Okay, let's wait.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to award RFP to the Architectural Engineering Design Associates for architectural services and further authorizing county manager, county chairman to execute a contract for the same.
Move by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Moore, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolutions recommended by the Personnel Committee urging Governor Cuomo to sign into law the Public Defense Mandate Relief Act.
Move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Tyler, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the county clerk's office to accept a grant from the New York State Archives' Local Government Records Management Improvement Fund in the amount of $22,401 for the imaging of tax rules, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract for the same.
Move by Mr. Whitson, seconded by Mr. Moore, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing a budget amendment in the county clerk's office, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $22,401 for the New York State Archives' grant.
Move by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Moore, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Resolution of condolence to the family of Margaret Pag Schneider.
Move by Mr. Gardner, unanimous second please, a second, thank you.
Resolutions from the Finance Committee, authorizing the New York State Deferred Compensation Plan to offer both designated contributions for Essex County employees.
Move by Mr. Skazafaba, seconded by Mr. Tyler, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye, vote as opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the county purchasing agent to go to RFP and award a contract to conduct title searches for foreclosed properties for the years 2013, 14, and 15.
Move by Mr. Skazafaba, seconded by Mr. Depot, any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not really aware where we're heading, what are their final plan on the auctions, but I wanted to see what we've done in the past. So, we did 1998, 99, 2000, and 2001 on two days, or two days in October of '04. Four years later, in '08, we did 2002, 3, 4, 5, and then we skipped a couple of years, and in 2014, did 6, 7, and 8. 9 was in 14, 10 was in 15, 11 was in 16, and I'm presuming that we'll be able to do 2012 in 17, and depending on how this goes, 13. So it looks to me like, you know, we're pretty close to being on whatever the schedule was back in 1998. So then I also wanted to see how many parcels were in 2013, 14, and 15, and it was 312 in 13, 496 in 14, and 635 in 15, totaling 1,443 parcels. At the, probably a low-ball estimate of $150 per, that comes out to be $216,450. So, I guess my question would be, that money comes from contingency? We didn't budget for this, I don't presume, right?
Right, we have not budgeted for it, so if you're gonna do it, you probably would take it out of fund balance.
So, if we were to sell all those properties and we didn't make $216,450, we would be in the red, would that be correct?
That's correct.
So, as we are so close, in my estimation, to being on track with what was previously done back in the 1990s and early 2000s, why we would want to spend $216,450 and possibly go in the red when we're supposed to? The purpose of this, I would think, is to recoup money that hasn't been paid to the county, and yet we're talking about spending this 200-plus money for this. I just, I know I'm the lone dog in this fight, but I just don't get it. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Well, I guess my response to that is, is how we've done it in the past, in my opinion, has been grossly wrong. To, we have procrastinated about it, there's vacant buildings in our towns that sat there for years. People don't pay their taxes because we never do anything about it, and your $200,000 figure, we don't, we don't have the RFPs back, we have no idea what price it's going to be. There are so many reasons to have a yearly tax sale, that, it's a long list of positive reasons to do it. And to put this off yet again, I've been here, like I said, since 2008, I've been told repeatedly we're gonna catch up, and we never have, so I think we need to put this bet once and for all. Mr. Skazafaba.
The tax sale, that's, hopefully we have this fall, that's 2011, am I correct?
The one we're having in October is 2011.
Yes. I mean, that's quite a span. You're absolutely right, come down, take a ride around my town, and I'll show you some places that the county owns where nothing is being done on them. In fact, if they were in private ownership, we'd be after them to do something with them. So, I mean, we need to get back on track, this isn't a permanent thing, we just need to get caught up. Once we're caught up, I'm certain that the county clerk's office can handle it, and they have been handling it, but they're just, it's just not being done, we're too far behind at this point in time, and we need to do something here. People that, it's not fair to people that pay their taxes, and not to mention it costs the county a fortune, because every one of those people that aren't paying their property taxes, we re-levy to make the towns whole, the schools whole, the special districts whole, so if you really wanna get into semantics of money, how much it's costing this county, believe me, it's a lot more than the $250,000, if that's the number that we would have to pay for the searches.
Mr. Pledy, so, is the real issue here that we've not been timely because we cannot in-house do these searches?
We have not kept up with the title searches. We have not kept up with the title searches, you can't really, you know, there's nothing within the process that can be done until the title search is done.
Alright, so, I mean, it would seem to me we have to have some, some type of policy in place to get these searches done on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think we need to get caught up and then go from there. Mr. Morrow, were you done, Mr. Pledy, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so that's the reason, right? We've not been able in-house to keep up with the title searches.
Well, that's the same question I was gonna ask that Mr. Pledy asked, but I was gonna go a step further. At the last meeting I was at last month, the county clerk was here, he said he could do them, has he changed his mind to that effect? That he can't do them now?
I don't think it has a matter of whether he can or he can, it's a matter of the timing, right? We just don't have, he hasn't been able to have the time, I mean, this isn't, the problem that I see here, and I don't care who likes it or doesn't, everybody's been pointing the finger that it's somebody different's problem. Well, if we get the title searches caught up and they still don't happen, then I think we're not gonna be blaming the county clerk's office anymore. Because I personally think there's, there's more issues than, than just the title searches getting these things out the door. The bottom line is, we need to get caught up and then move forward, we need to be having these on a yearly basis, as Tommy said, there's so many reasons to be caught up, you know, the county making everybody whole for years, it's, it's just unbelievable, you know, the vacant buildings that's set for years. Mr. Gill.
It's, you know, I continue on with Mr. Pledy's point, I mean, once we get caught up here with these things, I mean, I think we should establish a standard suspense calendar that reports to the board, I mean, we, we have milestones in this process, we collect, you know, tax bills go out at the same time every year, so therefore, from that point on, we should have a standard suspense to which, you know, memorandums to the board can be placed, that, that yes, by the suspense state, this, the title searches are done, you know, all the other things, the processes we have to go through in each calendar year, and so that, basically, we can keep our fingers on what's, what's happening in that process, and where, as you said, it, we start to get a backlog.
Mr. Farabee.
I think the, before this is awarded, the dollar amount needs to come back to the board before, so I mean, this does say to go out and award, but I think we need to know, and we also need to know the timing, you know, how long is it gonna take a company to do this? I mean, if the company's gonna take them a couple of years, you know, where are we, where are we gaining? So, but I think that needs to come back to us before it's awarded.
Mr. Harrington, you have a spoke.
I feel we may be a little aggressive on the number of years that we're considering, and that maybe perhaps we should take 2015 out of the mix. I noted that that was the year where most number of the language properties exist, also that would be the year where more than likely the most building properties would be paid by their owners.
Yeah, I have a few things. 2015 and 2016 can't be sold yet anyway, you have to wait 22 months after the taxable status date, which is January 1st. So, I might suggest monetarily, budget-wise, that, you know, you're not gonna be able to do 15 and 16 this year anyway, so say, if you do decide to go out with outside title searchers, do 15 and 16, well, 16 won't be ready until 17, but you might be able to break it up, so you don't have to pay for 15 this year if you wanna do searching, you could do 13 and 14 this year. 12, I understand Joe's gonna have ready, so if we, if we do 13 and 14, sub that out, we get that out of the way, Joe will be capable of doing 15 and 16, I think, and then we can get on track there, and that way it might budgetarily not be such a big hit, you can split it up between each of the two years. I wanna talk a little bit about, you know, the tax sale process, when I first became county attorney, Rick Meyer told me to hold one every four to five years, you know, so that's what I did the first two times. I think that was probably when we were flush with money, back in the days where, where, you know, things like health insurance weren't 15% jump every, every year, so I don't think that there was much concern there. That's what I was told to do, that's what I did. Subsequently, we need the money and we need to get these things going, and we have, we're on track, I can do, the amount of years doesn't really matter to me, that, the work there is more with the searching. If I have five years, I can crank it out, Mike and I, as soon as we do things now, for the last two, three, at least three or four years, it's done immediately. We do our mailings, I do up the affidavits, I walk it over, we do all this contemporaneously at the same time, so, you know, I'm not gonna weigh in on how, just to let you know, I can do this in a snap, and so can Mike, if we have what we need. So, and then we might wanna break that up budgetarily.
Okay, I'll go back to Mr. Moore and Mr. Skazafaba.
And no procrastination on our part.
I just wanted to state again, as I said last week's, I'm not opposed to going out to RFP per se, my opposition was that we had the language in there to award it as well before we knew what the cost was, so, I'd like to echo Mr. Farabee's statements, we need to know what the cost is, and are we really going to gain anything? How long is it gonna take them to do the searches? And at that point, when would we actually be able to have the auctions? I think, you know, if we're not gonna gain anything, or if it's, if it's such a small game that, I mean, I have a hard time with this 216,000, I'm sorry, I don't care. It defeats the whole purpose of the auction.
Dan, what you're proposing is 12 and 13.
Well, Joe says he has 12 done, so it should be coming over.
So, 13.
13 and 14, you can do this year, so you save some money, and then 15 next year, you're gonna be on track once you get through 12, 13, and 14, because you're 22 months behind taxable status date, we cannot even begin the process on 15 until November.
So, depending on how our proposal is written, I would assume it's per parcel, how much you're gonna charge per search?
Yeah, we're still working on the RFP, Mike got a couple of samples from different counties that use that process, essentially you would break it down by so much per parcel, and then, you know, ultimately, that would allow you the ability to say, well, I need 13 and 14 done, how much is it gonna cost, or I need 15 done, how much is it gonna cost?
So, we're not gonna attach any years to this, we're just gonna ask for a number per parcel.
Right. I mean, the other thing that you wanna keep in mind here is that, if we, we would all be looking at this a lot differently, believe me, if the county wasn't making our warrants whole at the end of each year. If you weren't collecting all that tax in your community for your school, your fire districts, your water, your sewer, and so on, we wouldn't be having this conversation, you'd be out, we'd be out having a tax sale.
Exactly.
Because it really doesn't cause any kind of hit or stress for a school district, a town, a special district, a village, because the county's the big bank that makes us whole. But it certainly stresses the county in regards to the amount of fund balance that you have to keep on hand and so on. So, just saying, if we're taking it right out of our municipality's pocket, we'd be looking at this whole issue a lot differently. Mr. Pledy?
I don't think anyone disagrees, Tommy. I don't think anyone here disagrees, we need to get caught up, you know, that's, that's a matter of fact.
Mr. Morrow, never gonna vote?
It could make a difference with the company, depending on how many you're gonna have, because if you do any work at all, the more you give them, the cheaper it may be. So I'd move an amendment to take 15 out of there and make it 13 and 14, like the county attorney has suggested.
An amendment on the floor, Mr. Morrow, do we have a second?
Mr. Skazafaba, all in favor of the amendment?
This has the words "award" in it, just, let's take that out.
No, I would, my amendment would be to take the award.
Take that out, okay, so we're removing the award and we're removing 2015.
Yes.
Correct? And the second still is good? Is moving? Yeah, I just wanna go back to what Dan Manning, he said when, I think he said when we get 12, 13, and 14 done, we're caught up, is that correct?
Yeah, we're pretty much caught up, because 15 can't even begin until the end of fall this year, so like 22 months from taxable status date.
I guess my question goes back, if Joe's done with 12, and he's ready to begin 13, gonna have that done by the end of the year, now we're gonna go out and award an RFP for somebody to do 13, again, I'm at a loss. Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Moore is opposed. Okay, so now all in favor of the resolution as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Are you opposed, Mr. Morrow? You don't know?
Award was removed from this amendment.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Aye. So no opposed? Okay, moving forward.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to award bid to Burke Excavation in the amount of $48,390 for asbestos abatement and building demolition at the Essex County Fish Hatchery.
Move by, Mr. Harrington, seconded by, Mr. Gardner, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
And I am opposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Under miscellaneous, authorizing the National Council for Behavioral Health and MTM Services as sole providers of collaborative documentation training, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract in the amount of $8,000 post-travel cost for one day of onsite training for Essex County Mental Health Department staff.
Move by, Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Tyler, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the Public Health Department to apply for and accept a National Association of County and City Health Officials grant in the amount of $14,000.
Move by, Mr. Harrington, seconded by, Mr. Gill, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it.
Resolution authorizing the Public Health Department to apply for and accept linking interventions for total population health, three-year grant in the total amount of $500,000.
Move by, Mr. Harrington, seconded by, Mr. Tyler, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the purchasing agent to bid and award a PortaCount Pro Model 8038 or comparable N95 mask fitting machine for the Public Health Department in an amount not to exceed $16,000.
Move by, Mr. Tyler, seconded by, Mr. Morrow, any discussion?
Tommy, what is this? This is, this is actually a fairly important device, it's, when our Public Health Department has to go out, if they had to go out for any kind of exposure event, their mask that they put on, this device will actually tell them whether the mask is leaking or not. The way it's currently done, they kinda use a sniff test and say, can you smell it, and hope that it works, it's not very effective. The $16,000 is grant funding, it is paid for exclusively under grant, but it is an opportunity to get something that protects people that are asked to go out in the field in any kind of a major event. Every, every ambulance in the county has got these N95 masks in them also, so I would think that Public Health would be willing to share them if needed to with fitting with all the ambulance squads. Mr. Farabee?
Just to note that, you know, should Essex County come under attack, or this is needed, it probably should be tested in the town of Keene first.
Now, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it.
Authorizing the purchase of a Canica Venalta Bizhub C368 multifunction printer in the sheriff's office in the amount of $6,445.85.
Move by, Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Gill, discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it.
There's also three resolutions on your desks from the Transportation Department. The first one is authorizing the Transportation Department to apply for and accept a New York State D O T Accelerated Transit Capital Funding Grant in the amount of $41,234.
Moved by Mr. Scazafaba, seconded by Mr. Moore. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Transportation Department increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $41,234 for the New York State D O T Accelerated Transit Capital Funding Grant.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to bid and award materials to build a pole barn to house Essex County buses with funds to come from the, um, Accelerated Transit Capital Funding Grant.
Moved by Mr. Tyler, seconded by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? Mr. Palmer?
Just to, just to kinda update you on all that that took place, we had actually applied for $90,000 for a grant from, in the Transportation Department to build a pole barn to, um, cover the buses and things like that. They only awarded us $41,000, so what we've decided to do is, D P W is going to build the pole barn, and we're gonna use $41,000 to purchase some materials.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Do you have anything, Mr. Manne?
Just something that I was looking at, we did, uh, one, two, three, four, five years of tax sale in the last two years, so when we have the stuff, we get it done.
We're done with that, stop fighting. I don't care. Anything else that comes before this committee, Mr. Scazafaba?
Yes, well, I arrived this morning, I had a letter in my mailbox, and I was gonna bring it up. Wasn't going to bring it up, I was gonna talk to the county manager about it, but I'm going to, it's anonymous, but some anonymous letters obviously have some truth to them, so I'm gonna read this, and it says, "So how come you allow John O'Neill to work from home so he can save his benefit for a buyout when he retires in March? Is that the new policy for people that retire? How is it that time sheet, how's that timesheet program working? Still using paper timesheets after spending all that money, another great move." My question is this, is John O'Neill working here or is it?
I would, you know what, he's here most of the time. I will check whatever your concern is.
Well, I mean, if it's a legitimate concern, if there's any truth to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else that comes before this committee?
Mr. Faraby?
Just would like to welcome Lore back for today, and Tom for keeping him busy.
Is, is Lore gonna give the plaque back?
If, if there's nothing else to come before this committee, we stand adjourned.